Thank you for all you've done for us and for all the plans for our future. We thank you for the district progress. And we're looking forward to a great second half of a school year. We are blessed with our superintendent and administrative staff. And we're blessed with an outstanding Board of Education. And most of all, Father, we thank you for the titans of the textbooks. Our teacher corps who diligently put out quality education to our students. For tonight, we ask for your guidance in all deliberations and discussions and decisions. And for all your help, we'll give you thanks. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Along with Jardine's special needs festival team, we have Jardine's cheer squad with the hustle who cheer us on to different games and everything. This year, we actually are able to have two home, hopefully a third home game, and five away games this year. They've worked really hard all year long. They showed some great sportsmanship during the games, before games. We have lunch with the teams when we go to their place and they stay and have lunch with us. So camaraderie and talking to each other, all that good stuff. We're very proud of these families and that.
Thank you. All right, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda is written.
Support. Discussion, roll call.
No.
Yes.
Black.
Yes.
Hammons.
Yes.
Mr. Hempel.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes. All right, next item is public comment. If we have anyone wishing to speak, we ask that you fill out the slip in the end. Do we have any at this point?
I didn't.
We do not have any, okay. We will move forward to our special order of business.
There's a lot of them.
Yes, we have a fair amount of them. But we're going to start, this is January. This is our organizational meeting. So we have some things we do every January. And we're going to start with the election of the officers. So can I get a motion for president?
I move that we nominate Lori Atkins for president.
Support. Discussion, roll call.
No.
Yes.
Black.
Yes.
Hammons.
Yes.
Mr. Hempel.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes. All right, I need a motion for vice president.
I make a motion for Rachel Knuth for vice president.
Support. Any discussion? All right, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Black.
Yes.
Hammons.
Yes.
Mr. Hempel.
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel.
Yes.
No.
Yeah.
Atkins.
Yes. Motion for secretary?
Make a motion that Mr. Hempel stay as secretary.
Support.
Discussion, roll call.
No.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Hammons.
Yes.
Mr. Hempel.
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel.
Yes.
Black.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes. Motion for treasurer?
Make a motion that Rose stays as treasurer.
Support.
Discussion, roll call.
Black.
Yes.
Mr. Hempel.
Yes.
Hammons.
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes. All right, thank you. We'll move forward to committee appointments. Can I get a motion for the committees?
Make a motion.
Can we do it for all of them at the same time?
That's what it looks like based on Debbie's great notes up here. That's what we did last year. If everyone's okay with what we have on the spreadsheet.
All right, so does someone want to make the motion for all the committees at the same time? You can do that.
I make a motion to accept the committee members as they have signed up on the committee assignments sheet that is to share with all board members.
Support. And I can go ahead and affirm this on the spreadsheet. So we have a spreadsheet that we organize ourselves with every year. So that means for 2020, finance committee would be myself, Rosie and Sue. Buildings and grounds would be Rosie, Chuck and Christie. Personnel would be Chuck, Christie and Sue. Policy would be Bev, Sue and myself. Enrollment committee has Bev and I, does have room for one more. Superintendent committees, we have community engagement, which is Rosie and Rachel, Ruth Geisy. Rosie and Rachel, Camp Hazelwood, Rosie and Chuck. And then we have some other, the Oakland, is that a separate? Oh yeah, I'm just going to finish reading them. There's other ones coming up, which is the Oakland County Legislative Committee and liaison, which Chuck has agreed to take on again. Thank you Chuck. And youth assistance, we have liaison, Sue, even though we know Bev is part of that. And the district leadership, I have myself on. So I just kind of read through them all so that everybody can be aware. But let's go on to the, do we need to vote for another motion for the superintendent committees or do we cover all?
You covered it.
Okay, all right, good. We will move on to item B, which is our business organizational.
No, we need to.
We do need to vote on the, oh, I'm sorry. Roll call. Ha ha, sorry, I was in discussion.
Black.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Hammons.
Yes.
Mr. Hempel.
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes, I'm going to blame that on a lovely dinner we all just had. A little full. They appreciated us with the dinner. It was lovely and we have stuff. So thank you to Chartwell's for that. All right, so now we can move on to item B, business organizational items. Can I get a motion for that?
I move the Board of Education to approve the 2020 business organizational items as presented.
Support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Black.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Hammons.
Yes.
Mr. Hempel.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes. Item C is our Board of Education meeting calendar. Can I get a motion, please?
I move the Board of Education to accept the meeting calendar through January 2020-2021 as presented.
Support.
Any discussion? All right, roll call.
Black.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Hammons.
Yes.
Mr. Hempel.
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes. All right, item D is school, MASP School Board Recognition Month. Dr. Coopie, did anybody else have anything else to say or should I?
Hi, Mommy. We do want to thank all of you. I think I said it at the dinnertime is, we know especially in this difficult time in education where we know schools are extremely underfunded, especially Hazel Park Schools and social media is often at its best. And we often have lots to say about the work we do in schools that the school board takes a lot of heat from what is happening. But our school board, people can say a lot about, but our school board is here and supporting us 100% of the time. We have a lot of fun and we also have difficult times. But you know, you are a fabulous school board through thick and thin. So thank you for all you do, supporting our students. And you made some very, very tough decisions along the way, five years ago, six years ago, and we're really proud of you. I'm proud to be your superintendent and I know our administrative team is proud to serve up and underneath you. So thank you for all you do.
Thank you. All right, we will move on then to item E, Jardine School Presentation. Is there another presentation or was it? Oh yeah, I see the little.
This is a little video I sent you in your board notes this week. Just a little update on what we're working on at Jardine and some fun things that we're doing to really build our community and make a place that's appropriate for adults and adult learning. So everyone in our community has really taken part in this project and we're very proud of it. This wasn't going to be shown tonight, so it is extra on your sheet. But my secretary Rochelle Tassi was very adamant that we present this tonight. So for your viewing pleasure. We hope it comes back on.
While we're waiting, can you give us an idea on the nights of your games at Jardine?
Sure, they're not actually at night. They take place during the school day.
Oh, during the day.
Very typically on Fridays. The next one is at Dakota. It will be this Friday. But they do have tournaments on the weekends sometimes too. Most of the games start at 10:00 and they're at Jardine. And it's really a fun event with the cheerleaders. And we invite all of our center programs and special needs classrooms. So they come and you know, there were lots of little girls last week that were very enthusiastic about the pom poms and they wanted to do it too. So it's a nice, it's a nice opportunity for that mentoring to happen and for the young ones to have some role models and the things that they can do as they get older. So Fridays through February, usually at 10 o'clock. But if you, we can send you actually that schedule if that helps.
Yes, that would be perfect. Thank you ma'am.
Okay. We could let the Boy Scouts go while.
While we work on that, okay. How about the Cub Scouts, PAC 1307?
Hello, my name is Thomas Bargle.
And I'm Wendy Weedall.
And we're from Hazel Park PAC 1307 Cub Scouts. And we've been learning about the flag code and flag etiquette. And we've learned that you're supposed to fly the flag sunrise to sunset. And we've also learned that if you fly the flag at night, it's supposed to be properly illuminated.
We've been looking around and none of the Hazel Park schools has them illuminated except Webb and Jardine. And they take those down. The rest of the schools don't have, they have them up, but they do not have them illuminated or taken down at night.
So we suggest you either take them down like I do at Webb or get a light either on the building facing the flag or on the flag pole going down.
Okay. That's good. I never thought about the illumination. I didn't know that was part of it.
We'll get Greg right on that. Thank you young man.
Thomas, how exactly lit does the flag need to be?
It needs to be lit so you could at least see the flag from the sidewalk walking by.
So that anyone walking by could identify that that's an American flag.
If they have a flag and they can't illuminate it, you can take it down. Like at Webb and Jardine, they take their flag down and even that's acceptable as well. But if you're going to leave it flying all night, it's supposed to.
All right, okay. Well, thank you for educating. We'll follow up on that to see what can be done. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Shouldn't it be in the dark, bad English?
Right, yeah, it was supposed to shine in all the time.
Are we in business?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Get those boys' names, Mrs. Scott. Get those boys' names. She wanted you to make sure you had their names. Is it going to? Those people on the news feel like.
Right.
Our reporters.
Yeah, right. All right. This time's going to be a charm, right? Let's go.
We're also collecting donations. Our student council is hosting a Cookies and Cram Night before finals where students are able to get help from teachers while eating food, the ultimate combo. We are also hosting a talent show in February. The AOK Club is hosting a snow coming on January 31st. A lot of people are really excited. The AOK Club is also still working on our What to Do and Not to Do Pride videos, which, like I said last time, I'd like to share with you guys when we're finished. Finally, our Hazel Park Community Coalition had our annual Dollar Skate Days over break, and they were a really huge success. Thank you, guys.
That's great. It's great to hear. It sounds like some fun things going on. I had heard about that fundraiser, so that's great that they're doing that. And a good idea with the raffle thing. Board, does the board have any questions for?
When can we, how can we get the tickets?
So, our members are selling them, like me and then a few choice people. And Ms. Kelly also has the tickets. So, I'm guessing you'd have to talk to her. But, we're also accepting donations too, so just going it out there.
And the raffle tickets are how much, or a dollar?
They're a dollar for one. You can get 12 raffle tickets for $10, and then 25 tickets for $20.
Oh, wow. All right. All right, well, thank you so much. Uh, the other reporter would be Stephen Milner from Advantage, but I don't think I see him. So, he may not be here. All right, next is Item H, our PBIS presentation.
Good evening, everybody. Um, this is just, um, mid-year update on our PBIS. Oh, okay. I'm sorry, here we are. So, um, we're in our third year now, um, and this is, will be the last year that the state, uh, our state partners are involved. So, uh, what they're trying to do is to prepare, uh, both the district leadership team and, um, subsequently, all the building leadership teams to ma- uh, make sure they know everything they're gonna need to do going forward without the support of the state. And what that involves is going through data review processes of all the data that we've collected, and establishing just some general structure of how we're going to operate in subsequent years once they drop out. What this presentation is, is just reviewing our school climate survey results, um, and just kind of a summary of where we are right now. So, as of today, um, 100% of our schools have implemented, uh, Tier One and Tier Two of PBIS. So, Tier One, if you remember, is just, um, our building expectations, um, teaching those expectations, um, and then, uh, Tier Two would be identifying students who need a little bit more. Most schools also are, um, at least starting Tier Three, and they would be the students with the most needs, and that, um, has to do with developing behavior intervention plans for those identified students. So, if you just go down, if we just go down the list, um, all of our schools have, uh, behavior expectations, those are posted throughout the building, um, all of our buildings are using Swiss, um, to report, uh, student behavior, um, all of our schools monitor and report that student behavior on a regular basis, all of our schools have an acknowledgement system, and, um, all of our schools are using teacher assessment to identify our Tier Two and Tier Three students, um, and we use an assessment tool twice a year for that. We, uh, all of our schools have implemented Tier Two check-in, checkout programs, and all of our schools have created a PBIS brochure for parents. Uh, right now, we're also working on, um, having something on the district website, a PBIS. I don't know if it'd be a separate page, or maybe a section for each school to have PBIS information. Um, and every school's team is meeting regularly, um, to discuss their behavior data, to identify the students who continue to need more support, and, um, monitoring how those interventions are being implemented. Um, this is just kind of a summary of what the school climate survey is. Um, it's really just used to provide data to how students, parents, and staff, um, view the climate in their school. Um, the, it's separated out into elementary and, uh, secondary. So, we administer this assessment twice a year. Um, it takes about 10 to 15 minutes. It is online. Um, for parents, we try to get them at the first parent-teacher conferences, and for those parents who don't make it, we can either send it directly to their email, or send it out in a blast to parents. Each school kind of decides how they can get the most parent involvement. Some of the sample questions, um, for the student, "I like school, I feel like, like I do well in school, my school wants me to do well," and then below that is some of the questions for school personnel. And they're rated just a little bit differently. Um, what we like to see, and when we get to the results, you'll see, is, is, uh, anything over two point, a score of 2.5, up to four, is where we're looking, um, at those scores falling. So, we have, I have it just broken down, school by school. This, uh, is Hoover first. Um, this shows three years. That score is excellent. I mean, anything over 2.5 is really good. We can just kind of go through schools. This is Webb, again, the last three years. United Oaks. Um, Edison is just too separate because we have, we have both elementary and secondary. Advantage is the same way. Junior High. High School. Um, and so, before I get onto this slide, I just want to say that those results are awesome. They were so good, and all of our, uh, assessment data is so good, that I was, um, contacted by Steve Goodman, who is kind of the My Blissie person at the state, um, about a month and a half ago. Um, and what he wanted to know is if we would be interested in a pilot project that the state My Blissie PBIS and national PBIS is looking to implement. And what it is, is school-based mental health services put into schools that are doing PBIS. National PBIS does this all over the country, and schools who have PBIS, um, implemented at any level. What the state of Michigan's looking to do is to put these school mental health services in place in schools that they've identified as having PBIS fully implemented and who are seeing excellent results. When they ran all of our assess, uh, when they ran the state's assessment data for all the districts who were involved in the PBIS project, Hazel Park and one other district were the top two performing districts in the state of Michigan. So, that was like incredible. We are meeting this week with them to get more information about what this pilot project would entail. Um, once we hear about what is involved, then we'll have to make a decision going forward as to whether we want to be involved in this. But, um, I just wanted to point out, that's, um, that's a huge accolade for Hazel Park, uh, to be, you know, in the top two in the state. Um, these next, uh, results just break down, um, the, uh, climate survey into the various categories. So, you have, uh, they, they encompass different areas, staff connectedness, how connected does the staff feel to the school, what is the str- structure for learning in the school, school safety, physical environment, peer adult relations, and parental involvement. When, uh, district, um, or, I'm sorry, school teams look at this data, this is what they use to identify areas that they need to work on. So, for example, um, at Edison, one of our really low-scoring areas is parental involvement. And so, we look at that and try to understand, first of all, why that's happening, and then what can we do to improve that. This is the Junior High. This is Hoover. United Oaks. Webb. Advantage. Oh, okay. So, I, let's stop there. Any questions so far, where we go to the last part of this? Okay. So, this just looks at, we want to look at, as a district, uh, PBIS team, we want to look at, what are the trends district-wide? So, we, we look at different things. First of all, where is most behavior occurring from this? We know it's in the classroom and in the hallways. So, then, we can also use this data to target, um, uh, those areas for intervention. And then, we also look at what's motivating the behavior. Um, and in most cases, it, there's really two, two top reasons, to avoid tasker activities and to obtain peer attention. Again, this provides us information for areas to tackle. And this was just a kind of a letter of, I think you might have already seen a copy of this, but this was a letter of kind of congratulations that, um, was given to us. And this is, I think, the second or third year we've gotten this, yeah, um, for our achievements. Any questions?
Well, this is, um, great data. Thank you very much for pulling this together and, and going through it. Um, I had a question on the letter, because it, it had, uh, high school as silver, and it looked like there were certain things that could cause it to be silver versus bronze, and I was just curious what that was.
Yeah, I'm not sure about, to be honest with you. But I can, I can definitely look, look into it. I'm not sure why it would be.
It, in the, I think in the other letter that we have, it had like a grid of how it could, and I was just curious what was the criteria that got them there.
Yes.
Good. Um, no, thank you for all your hard work on this. I know that this has been a couple of years in the making as we've drilled down, and I'm excited to do this.
Really, it's the staff, the building staff.
Yeah.
That it's make the teachers, the administrators.
Right, everybody working together to set these together. So, yeah, thank you from the board.
Well, and, um, as, as she's being very modest, uh, three years ago, uh, when I said to Michelle, "Will you, uh, take this over and be in charge of this?" And she kindly said yes. It, we wouldn't have gotten this far without Michelle, so we really, kudos to you, Michelle, because you've worked very hard to lead the teams, and yes, it's those that are underneath you, but without a strong leader leading PBIS through the district, it wouldn't be there, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, that moves us on to our consent agenda. Can I get a motion, please?
Move the Board of Education to accept the consent agenda, and, um, would like to draw attention to the notes of appreciation.
Support. Roll call.
No.
Yes.
Block.
Yes.
Hampton.
Yes.
Mr. Hempel.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes. All right, so, yeah, there were several notes of appreciation in there. Uh, we can, um, we can just say, thank, there, there were thank yous to all those that worked really hard to make sure the Dollar Skates went well at the ice arena, um, you know, to Cyrus Shank for a donation, um, that can be used, um, with, from the superintendent's direction, and I don't know if there's something in, in, in mind for that, but I know we have a donation, and then, uh, the Walmart grant, which we already saw, the fabulous lobby of Dara, and I don't know, Dr. Kierkegaard.
Uh, no, that's, uh, donations for my husband, who gives every year, and he's given the school district $5,000. And I'm thinking that I'm going to open that up to teachers to apply for scholarships of their choice towards, um, something that they'd like to do back at their schools. So.
Great.
Give them an opportunity.
Thank you, that's wonderful. All right, so, we do not have any unfinished business, so we will move to new business. So, the first is personnel recommendations. Um, we will start with Ask Me, the custodial, uh, union. Can I get a motion, please?
I move that the Board of Education accept the administration's recommendation for the Ask Me employee group as presented.
Support. Uh, discussion.
Uh, yeah, go ahead. Um, just that we had a lot of movements around, um, that is the discretion of management, and, um, there made some discussions, just to move some things around, uh, to, to make some more efficiencies within the building.
She knew what I was gonna say.
So, you're good, Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Okay. All right, roll call.
Block.
Yes.
Hampton.
Yes.
Mr. Hempel.
Yes.
Hammond. Mrs. Hempel.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Atkins.
Abstained due to familial conflict. Um, the next is HPA, the teacher union. Can I get a motion, please?
Move the Board of Education accept the administration's recommendation for the HPEA employee group as presented.
Support. Any discussion?
Just that, um, I want to go on the record to say that our special education administration has continued to work tirelessly to fill these special ed positions. They are extremely hard to fill, to have an ASD teacher, to hire another social worker, and even an early-on teacher. It's just the field is, um, extremely hard to fill, so kudos again, uh, Ms. Dillard, uh, for you, and, um, Mrs. Kraus for, um, finding paraprofessionals. It's just really difficult, so we're really lucky to continue to be able to fill these positions. So, thank you.
All right, roll call.
No.
Yes.
Hampton.
Yes.
Mr. Hempel.
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel.
Yes.
Block.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Uh, next is HPPA, the paraprofessionals. Can I get?
We want to skip, because we need to step.
Oh, all right, we'll come back. Uh, let's go to unaffiliated employee group.
I move that the Board of Education accept the recommendations for the unaffiliated employees as presented.
Support. Any discussion? All right, roll call.
Block.
Yes.
Hampton.
Yes.
Mr. Hempel.
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
All right, we will come back to the Item C for paraprofessionals. For now, we'll go ahead and move on to Item B, which is approv, uh, the summer school program. Can I get a motion, please?
Move the Board of Education approve the 2020 summer school programs as presented.
Support. And discussion. Who's gonna speak? Uh, there we go, back to the question.
Carla's.
Good evening. I am here tonight to present, um, request your approval for the, um, high school summer school program and the elementary summer school program. As of right now, uh, we are looking at having the same structure as we have had for the past few years. We're looking to ask for, um, the projection of seven teachers, where we would offer the credit recovery, and also potentially a face-to-face course. We're still shooting for that. Um, with your approval, we'll begin the, uh, planning process, so we'll be able to firm up exactly which course that would be, this face-to-face. And so, um, it will be six weeks. Free lunch will be offered. Um, it starts June 22nd through July 31st of 2020, the same time schedule with eight, and then the lunch period from 11:30 to 12:30, I believe, it's on the sheet. But, pretty much the same format, but once, uh, with approval, we'll get started planning and be able to actually come back with which course would be the best face-to-face course, and of course, the credit recovery courses are similar to what has been, uh, presented in the past. So, that is for the high school. Would you like me to go on to elementary, or is there a discussion for high school?
Any questions from the board on the high school? All right, go ahead on to the elementary.
All right, so with the elementary, um, we're looking at the same format as the year before, not necessarily last year. This year, we're going back to, um, the format that we had before, where it will be K3. We're still looking to offer the positions to seven teachers, with the focus would be reading and math, K3. Um, the same weeks as the high school, which would be June 22nd through July 31st, but of course, it would be the half-day, and the free lunch would be provided, as well as breakfast, similar to high school. So, pretty much the same format, but again, with approval, we'll begin the actual planning, um, and finalizing as to what things would look like.
Board of any questions?
Is this open to all the schools, or just the one certain school that, uh, you're gonna be using, which is?
No, it's open to everyone. This, it'll be back to the way it was in the past, so every school.
But first, to those students that, that we think may potentially, um, not pass for, uh, the third grade reading law. So, um, under the third grade reading law, those students who may not make the cut scores, one way for them not to be retained is to attend summer school and have the opportunity to make adequate progress, and the superintendent to say that that was adequate progress under guidelines that we set up. So, the first opportunity will be for those students that, at some point mid-year, Stephanie is working with the elementary principals to come up with a cutoff that we believe that, that, um, would make them potentially ineligible to go on to the fourth grade. And we're gonna give them the first bid for summer school, uh, soon as NWA is over, because we want to make sure that we have them s- early set up for summer school and connected with their parents early on to attend. Um, it's very concerning, the third grade reading law, um, so we want those parents focused in and committed to summer school in case they do not pass their SAT, or the P, uh, the, the M step, sorry. Call it something different. So, we're really hoping that they'll attend summer school.
Well, that's what I mean.
So, they'll have the first dibs to this. And then, of course, we want to get second graders in there too, and first graders, so that this doesn't happen to them. We want them all reading on grade level. But, third graders first.
And what building will be in?
Hoover. So, yeah.
Are you going to Hoover this year?
Yeah. It was last. It was last year, too. Last year, too.
Well, I keep hearing, wow.
And it's the same format for, for, that's special ed. Yeah.
All right. You want to the two?
Any other questions from the board? All right, um, thank you, and we can go on to roll call.
Yes.
Yes. Hampton.
Yes.
Mr. Hempel.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
All right, um, we can go back to the vote on paraprofessionals, if I could get a motion for that, um, group, please.
I move that the Board of Education accept the administration's recommendation for the HPPA employee group as presented.
Support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Block.
Yes.
Hampton.
Yes.
Mr. Hempel.
Abstained due to conflict.
Hammond.
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel.
Abstained due to familial conflict.
No.
Abstained due to familial conflict.
Atkins.
Yes.
All right, now we'll move on to Item C, approval of the sinking fund project list. Can I get a motion, please?
Make a motion that we approve the sinking fund projects for the 2020 fiscal school year as presented.
Support. And discussion, we have Mr. Zernas here.
Good evening, everyone. Just to kind of give you a quick rundown of what we're looking to do over the next six months in regards to the sinking fund projects. Um, first up was the high school pool deck. Uh, we're looking at doing a replacement, uh, or refurbishment of the deck itself. We're talking with a tile contractor right now to determine what is the most cost-effective way to do it, and the way in which we can get the most life out of, you know, what we can do for our money. Um, we also are looking at, uh, concrete and asphalt work district-wide, uh, a lot of curbs, a lot of storm basins are falling in, uh, just general repair on, on asphalt. And there's, again, there's a lot of work to do. We haven't done a lot of it lately, but we need to kind of catch up on it. Um, next item is the auditorium roof. There's some concern about the, uh, membrane that's up there. Uh, we did have a contractor come out and recommend a full, uh, replacement, and we're looking at moving forward with that. Handheld radios, the sinking fund, uh, in the past, we were only allowed to do, uh, building work, and, and our current sinking fund now with legislation has allowed us to, uh, again, expand into security and technology. So, with handheld radios, we're looking at, um, you know, trying to shore up our ability to communicate within our high school, um, junior high, and this building. Along with the security, um, thought, we are looking at replacing or repairing emergency lighting throughout the district, so if there is something that happens, we have, obviously, our exit lights and our emergency lighting comes on for us to evacuate. And we're also looking at, um, completing an additional high school bathroom set. We're looking at the set by the, uh, front corner by the bandrooms for auditorium. Uh, we are, uh, in addition to that, looking to replace, uh, additional technology throughout the district, um, whether it be in the classroom to support students and teachers. We're also looking to, uh, this is the last year of E-rate funding for this window. Uh, the district currently has about $300,000, uh, of available funding. The, the, the one thing with the E-rate funding is, is we have to then provide a match locally, so we have to provide 15% of whatever we spend in terms of the E-rate funding, which is a pretty good discount when you think that we're getting, we're only paying 15 cents on a dollar for any of the technology that we're buying. Um, and, you know, we're currently, uh, evaluating what our infrastructure and technology needs from our broadband and, um, inter-district nee, or inter-building needs, um, and we'll be coming back to the board with a summary of what those, uh, needs are and, and, you know, the timeline to replace those. Um, and then, um, the last item is HVAC replacement. There's a number of aging units within the district, whether they're classroom units or rooftop units. I think, you, when you look at it, I think there, most of the units replaced that are either 15 years or older, so, I mean, they're getting, they're probably past end of life. But, our suggestion is, is that as these units fail, we replace them, and do any, you know, do that cost-benefit analysis of, you know, what is the repair cost versus what is the replacement cost? So, we're just asking to set aside some money, just so it's there, so that we can use it in terms of doing those HVAC, uh, projects as they come to. And again, as, as we progress throughout the year, there, there may be other projects that come, come into play, that it's an emergency, or something needs to be done that, you know, we weren't aware of, and, and that, again, would be brought to the board for their approval. Any questions?
Well, I'm, I'm excited about a couple of things on the list. It's nice to see the pool in there and the high school bathrooms, I'm very excited about those, um, because I know that the, the ones by that bandroom are used when we have public there, general public, and, um, any, any big event, you know, they're using those, and I think it's, it makes a lot of sense to, to have those as nice as they can be. And I would actually really love to see the finished ones, but, um, of the ones that we did this year, because I haven't been able to see those yet, if we have any pictures. It's a little sidebar, but, um, you know, so.
They're, they're almost done. I think the last project that we have left to do is, is, the paint color was, uh, inappropriately chosen by the architect, and, and so, we're going to go back and, and repaint, because right now, they're all white, uh, which don't really go with the whole color scheme that's in there, of a gray, and, uh, so, we're gonna, we're gonna go back in, uh, the contractor came back with a price that was a little bit too high for us to stomach, so we're gonna, we're gonna do that ourselves internally, as opposed to paying, uh, an outside company to do it. So, it's, it's, they're, they're very close. But, the tile was completed over the winter break, it looks great. And they do, it's a nice refresh in that, in the, in those two sets of bathrooms we did.
Okay, great. Board, any other comments, questions?
Right now, the, the, the amount that's in the sinking fund is like 1.1.
Correct.
Yeah, it's, I think it's a little over 1.2, so there is, there is money that is left over for us, just in case something does come up. Um, and again, we're only six months away from the new fiscal year, where we're going to get that replenished again. So, and again, uh, some of these projects, again, with the HVAC replacement, I mean, knock on wood, if, if we don't have any serious issues, we won't be spending that allocation. Um, and then, again, the security lighting, we're going to try to, to do that internally ourselves, so, I mean, we have the staffing, unless it's, if it's, if it's overwhelming, then we'll do it, uh, you know, we'll hire an external. But, from this standpoint, I mean, we have the ability to do it in-house, just buy the equipment and install it ourselves, which will save us, um, a, a nice hourly rate for local contractors that we have to otherwise pay.
So, I just want to clarify, um, so, this is just showing us the amount that we're earmarking for the year, so all approvals and all RFPs will be brought back to us for approval.
Correct.
Okay. Just want to clarify that. Thank you.
Any other comments from the board?
No, looks good.
Yeah. All right, thank you. Uh, roll call.
Mr. Hempel.
Yes.
Block.
Yes.
Hampton.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel.
Yes.
No.
Excuse me.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
All right, moving on to the next item, food service vehicle.
Yes. All right. Moving on to the next item, food service vehicle. Can I get a motion?
Move that the Board of Education approve the purchase of a food service vehicle, as presented.
Support.
Mr. Zernas?
So what we're proposing to the board is that out of the food service fund, we purchase a smaller transit van than the van that we currently have being utilized within food service. And we're going to use that transit van then to transport summer meals throughout, well, not throughout the district, but it'll be at certain locations during the summer. So we'll try to do, I think we have listed here, Scout Park possibly, UO, or even Ford, to have, you know, meals brought to the area, so that local residents and students can come to these areas on this end of town, versus trying to get into Hoover and the high school where our summer meal program is. So we're trying to include the entire district in our summer program, and not making it inconvenient for individuals to get to the locations where we currently are housing it. Then what we're going to do is move the current larger, I think it's a 2,500 or a 3,500 van, over to our maintenance and custodial department, so it can be utilized more effectively and more often. What that does is that, you know, we, because it was purchased through food service, partially purchased through food service and general fund three years ago, we will be transferring an amount of $12,000 from the general fund to the food service fund to reimburse that fund for their cost of the van.
Comments from the board?
Yeah. So what you're saying is the transit is going to be completely bought from the food program? It's not, none of that's coming, and the only reason the $12,000 is because...
Three years ago, I believe, our maintenance department backed into the food service box truck, I believe it was, and it was a total loss. The insurance provided us proceeds, which we used to purchase that van. In addition to general fund dollars were used. So the allocation between the general fund and the food service fund, we've estimated the cost of the current van, based on its excellent condition and the fact that it has very minimal miles. And then, the ownership of the van, basically, the $12,000 reimburses the food service fund for the ownership of the van, or their portion of what they paid for it. Again, we have to really keep track of food service dollars versus general fund dollars. Food service dollars, once money gets into the food service fund, it's considered federal, because such a large portion of that fund is generated or is financed through the federal programs. So we're just making sure that we do everything right, that we're not jeopardizing any funding within the food service fund going forward.
And who's covering the insurance and the transit van for the food service?
The transit van is covered by our fleet insurance through SENS.
So the Hazel Park School District pays the insurance on it?
Correct.
So if we're paying the insurance on it, and our food, our guys backed into it, we paid the insurance, I guess I'm kind of confused why we would pay them back $12,000 when we've done paid the insurance on it.
Well, we used, we used $12,000 of our insurance proceeds. That $12,000, originally the van was purchased from the food service fund, so the box van itself was the food service fund's property. There has to be some distinction between assets within the food service fund, even though everything is technically part of Hazel Park. Because the van was purchased through food service funds, we need to designate that as federal dollars, or bought with federal dollars, and then therefore, we're going to reimburse the $12,000. We reimburse, insurance money reimbursed that fund, that fund then used those dollars, plus general fund dollars, to purchase the new van. So again, it's a matter of just trying to make sure that we maintain our ownership structure, and what is food service has to stay within food service. Just like any, if we were to go out and sell any, you know, kitchen ovens, or anything that's within the kitchen, that money could not be transferred into the general fund. We, it's just, we need to make...
I totally understand that. I guess I'm saying, if we're paying the insurance premium on it...
Is that the...
Jason, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
But the insurance, the money that we got, didn't cover the whole price of the van?
No.
That's the difference. That insurance premium that we received only paid part of the van. The other part of the money came from...
The general fund.
The general fund. So the dollars that we got from the insurance premium was dollars to pay back the kitchen, the...
Was the other one totaled or something?
Yes. So we have to pay back what was due for the dollars that owed to that fund.
I thought it was a fix or something. It was a toll.
Yeah. In the insurance policy, we can't buy an insurance policy just for food service. So again, they just, they're just under our umbrella. So, yeah.
We're just paying the portion that we took away from the food service fund.
Any other comments or questions on this?
So I know this has been discussed in several committees. This is what, you know, I assume this represents what the food service wants, and the maintenance, in terms of them getting the larger vehicle to be used, that that'll get used there.
And then, the current maintenance vehicle, I believe, is being transferred over to technology for their use.
So you're getting the Lincoln, because it's coming from a Ford Lincoln dealer?
Yeah, the transit van, yeah.
Just checking, you got it from Signature Ford Lincoln. Where's that at?
I think it's over at Owasso. And the reason we're not purchasing from a local dealership is the Owasso dealership for Ford has the MyDeal or the State bid. So what this, what this price represents is, is the dealerships throughout Michigan will submit bids for a number of vehicles to the state of Michigan. And what that is, is it's a collaborative bid, so that we don't have to then bid out every time we want to buy a vehicle. We can just use that same bid process that they've already been through. So it's, we have to go through the local dealerships that have won the award for that vehicle type.
Okay. Thank you.
I look forward to hearing how this goes this summer. I'll be interested to see. All right.
I'm sorry. We talked about it in the Building and Grounds Committee. It's not included on here for wrapping the van with Hazel Park branding. Is that...
I think that's all part and parcel to the...
For the $24,000?
$24,000, yeah.
Okay.
I think the van itself is.
Does that add to the deal?
That's in addition.
Is in addition to.
Okay.
Plus the rack.
Right. That's what I thought. So there's going to be another $3,000 later for branding.
All right. Anything else? All right, roll call.
Noel?
Yes.
Flack?
Yes.
Hampton?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes. All right. Next item is the Hazel Park High School cafeteria furniture. Can I get a motion, please?
I move that the Board of Education accept the administration's request and approve the purchase of cafeteria furniture for Hazel Park High School from Hertz Furniture, at a cost of $113,753, as presented.
Support.
Discussion. Mr. Zernas?
So this is the first in a number of years where we're going to start to refresh the high school. I think the biggest bang for our buck right now is to place tables, paint the walls, pull some stuff out of the existing walls where the old tables that folded out, they're kind of a hazard. So again, what we're doing here is replacing all of the tables, and we're going to replace those with some high-top booths, some round tables, some flexible space where kids can sit and socialize. And again, it's a plethora of new and refreshing items, where we're hoping will entice kids to, you know, socialize and, you know, be able to eat their lunch in a refreshing area. Again, we're also, we're also going to bring to the board, or actually, it's not, we've discussed in Building and Grounds about repainting the space itself as well. And again, it's all part and parcel of a step, phase in of redoing the kitchen itself over there, front, front to back. So I'm not sure, sorry.
Trying to pull up the pictures?
Oh, I was going to say, yeah.[1164.04][1164.04](laughing) Yeah, I was going to say...
Keep talking for a little bit.[1169.04][1169.04](laughing)
Did we ever find out who did the artwork on the walls?
The artwork was, I believe, done by students, students...
Sam right here did it.
Yeah. So I believe it was art students who had...
Mrs. Lee is here.
Oh, so you might want to speak to that further. I'm just assuming. From what I heard, it was art students who had, who were part of a sports team, and they were able to paint their mural with their sport. Is that correct?
Well, it was at the end of the school year, and the kids wanted to do it. So they just did, they submitted an entry score, and then chose their spot. Sam did one of the spots. She didn't do the song already. So they all just, and then the other windows different, we invited other people from different clubs to do them as well.
And those murals will be...
The ones that are on the table will go down the athletic hall, and that will hopefully be bricked in, so it'll be a solid wall. And I don't know about the ones on the windows.
And this is going to be done, the painting's going to be done at winter break? Is that what I...
It's going to be over mid-winter break.
All right. I'm excited for this. I hope that the kids like this. I think it's going to totally transform that area.
And our hope is that if we could turn this around faster, no promises, but the Promise Zone has a very special guest coming, we believe, for the speaker. And if we could pull off having this, that would be exceptional for the very special guest we're hoping to have.
For the dinner, the Promise Zone dinner?
For the dinner. All right. She will be amazing if we can pull her off.
Okay.
So this is a rendition of what the space will look like, albeit flipped. The booths will be going against the interior wall, and seating will be placed along the windows.
Looks great.
Yeah.
Should be beautiful.
Looks much more modern.
Are you, as you say, you're taking the murals off, and you're going to be able to fill the wall in with brick, and paint it all in that one week?
Well, we're probably, we're going to do the brick and everything beforehand, and then paint it in the winter week. It's only going to take about three days to do it. It's about 10 gallons of paint, and we're going to do it in green and gray.
Magic's going to happen.
Talked about whether putting, you know, drywall up or brick in, and just feel like the brick is a more permanent solution where those tables used to be, versus putting drywall up. Having brick and then drywall doesn't seem to be busily appropriate, versus just doing it right the first time.
All right. Any other comments from the board?
No.
This is great.
I'm excited for this. All right, roll call.
Thank you, Brad.
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Hampton?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes. All right. Dr. Kripke, do you have anything for your update?
I do not.[1362.22][1362.22](laughing) Okay. Double checking. All right. That moves us on to board member and administration comments.
I just wanted to say, welcome back. I hope your holidays were fantastic. Thank you so much for the dinner and the gifts tonight. It's always very humbling. Appreciation month. Amazing. Beautiful job, Jardon, on your lobby. That's fantastic. I can't wait to stop by and see it. I also want to thank Thomas and Randy for their educating us about the flag etiquette. Some good kids there. And then, I also wanted to congratulate two former HP students, Sean Thompson and Chase Brown. I had the honor of attending their Eagle Court of Honor this weekend. And just want to remind you guys about the projects that they did. So Sean worked on benches, Sean organized and worked on the benches that were placed at Scout Park, and there's one in front of UO as well. And then Chase did the flag retirement boxes, which I think there's three in Hazel Park, one for sure at City Hall. So if you don't know what to do with your flag when it gets ready, take it there. The Boy Scouts will take care of it for you. But anyways, I just wanted to recognize that, you know, we have great kids here in Hazel Park. Scouts are still in Hazel Park. Come, you know, come join. It's a good time, and really produces some really fantastic young kids. I would say young men, but it's boys and girls now. So that's it.
Thank you. Mrs. Hempel?
Oh, just short and brief. I want to thank everyone for the board appreciation gifts. We have quite a few things. None of you have seen it. We have artwork that was done from Web. Thank you. Very nice. Charles Car Wash, United Oaks, Jardon. So we appreciate all of you. So thank you.
Mrs. Knoll?
Just like to say Happy New Year, welcome back. Hopefully, you had a restful time off, and that it's really a humbling experience to be recognized, and see all the kind things that are written on the wall, and receive the gifts. So thank you. It is appreciated. I think that we're turning the corner finally, I feel like. We are entering some exciting times, seeing that furniture come in, some new paints, some new grants coming our way. I think it really speaks to the wonderful staff that we have here, and how hard everyone works every single day for the benefit of our students here. So thank you to everyone, and welcome back.
Dr. Kripke?
We have a lot of exciting things happening in second semester. We have a lot of work happening in our math pilot. I think we'll hear some end results coming up from that. And at the elementary school, our ELA group is starting up as well. I think our superintendent advisory group is going to have a meeting with the Board of Education soon to talk about the dress code, and also to talk a little bit about cell phone policy from their perspective at the high school level, and what they feel that it should be. We also have a social justice cohort that's starting to meet tomorrow with four other school districts across the county. We're the last group in Oakland County to meet with the ISD. So we'll be interested, a group of 10 educators are heading off on that. So a lot of great projects that are going on and still going on in the school districts. So I'm excited to hear and share with you what's happening this second semester across the district.
Okay, thank you.
I want to say a special thank you also for our gifts, and for just another good year of school.
Thank you. Mr. Hempel?
Yes, same thing. Thanks to all the staff, all lovely gifts. And also, the Hazel Park Swim Team, which consists of the junior high and high school, are planning a bottle drive fundraiser to raise funds for the lane lines and some other activities at the pool area. They're planning on January 18th, picking up some bottles. If you have them, set them on the porch. I have some flyers I meant to put out prior to the meeting. There's also a website, not a website, an email address for the hazelparkswim@gmail.com, where you can give information on picking up if you want, or you can email me at chuck.hempel@hazelparkschools.org. And hope to see, we had a great time at the relays. There was a lot of schools. And then, the swim team was also invited out to West Bloomfield Meet last Saturday, which was a great time. Boy did. Some of those schools had some kids. I think Nova had over 30 boys just swimming themselves. And I felt bad a little bit, because we only had seven. But at the same time, they gave it their all, and they cheered for one another. It was a good time. Thank you.
I did give some bottles to the bottle drive, so I...
Okay.
Do you have two?
I got plenty. I got 90 of them, because I got two kids in there.
Tucker, if you want to stop by, my car's in the way.[1684.42][1684.42](laughing)
I got enough in my truck too, so don't worry. The kids will be happy when I go there.
All right. Thank you. I attended those swim relays, and I hadn't been in many years.
It was packed. I had no idea. I mean, it was almost standing room only. So it was really great to see all those swimmers and competition for a few hours. And it's mighty hot in that pool. I hadn't remembered that on a cold day, so it was welcome. But anyways, it was a great time. It's a privilege to serve on the board and be up here, and to be appreciated is very, very nice and heartwarming. And we appreciate all of you. The presentations tonight, I think, were really great. I loved Jardon seeing where the money actually went, because you hear that you get grants, but you don't actually see the finished product sometimes. So that was very, they were all really good. The scouts were great. You know, there's nothing like kids. So anyway, thank you all for coming, and stay warm.
Yeah. All right. Well, Happy New Year. I'll thank you again for the appreciation gifts, and I want to thank the board. This board works really hard. It's not always easy, but I know that we're dedicated to bettering this district, to the students of this district. And we might not always agree on the approach to get there, but I know that everybody's got their heart in it, and they work really, really hard, dedicate a lot of time, not just here, but behind the scenes. So I appreciate that. I appreciate the board's effort for that. And yeah, thanks to everyone who presented tonight, and we are ready to get this new year started, and lots of work still to be done. So with that...
Motion to adjourn.
There we go. Thank you.
Support.